We'll call this meeting of the Craving County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, July 5th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Lainer.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Chairman Jones.
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag, and I ask that you remain standing for a prayer by our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As Independence Day is celebrated in our communities, we praise you and bless you, Lord God, for the birth, life, and continuing development of this great nation, the United States of America. Whenever and wherever in the cause of human events courage and commitment calls a people to take a stand on self-evident truths, we rejoice. Before you and in you, the Creator, all are created equal. Endowed by you, the Creator, with certain unalienable rights, we as a people accept as well certain responsibilities to protect and defend always for ourselves and for others life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. With a firm reliance as the protection of your divine providence, we renew our pledge today to serve this nation, knowing full well that the power of this assembly is derived from the consent of the governed. In you we place our solemn trust now and forever. Amen.
You want to welcome each of you this evening to the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is your meeting, and those who may be viewing online. I would ask for those that are in attendance with us, please make sure that your phones are on vibrate so they would not disrupt this meeting this evening. Commissioners, you have there before you your agenda. Are there any items you desire to add or pull from tonight's agenda? Here none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Commissioners, if you will allow, for Chairman's privilege, just a moment before we proceed to agenda items tonight, I would like to recognize a special guest we have with us, Ms. Rella Crowell. She has been chosen to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners convention with many of us that will be going here next in August, and she will be the youth voice representative from Craving County. I'd like to ask her if she would please come forward. She's going to make a comment or two. And then also, as part of what she has to do to apply for this opportunity that she has, she needs a picture with the Board of Commissioners. And so we ask our board after she makes those comments to please let us accommodate her. So, good evening. Glad to have you.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here. I'm in the 10th grade. Well, my name is Rella Crowell, we already know. And I'm in the 10th grade, and I attend Craving Early College here in New Bern. I'm chosen to represent the New Bern Boys and Girls Club Teen Center at the Youth Voice 2022 submit. I look forward to attending the submit and representing the club and Craving County community. Thank you.
We thank you for your interest. And at this time, how you want, let's do the picture, Ms. Lauren.
I guess if you guys would all just, I guess we have to hear.
I think if just these three moved, they could stay behind, and then...
Stand behind them.
Yeah, and y'all three move in front.
If you don't mind, you come right here and stand in the middle, and they'll surround you. However, y'all want to do it. Where y'all want to get it around here?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that looks really nice.
Yeah, that looks good.
That looks really nice. Okay. Lot of pictures. Okay, cool. In the back, move just a little bit. Perfect.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We also appreciate her family that's here in attendance with her also this evening. Thank you. Commissioners, the first agenda item we have this evening is a public hearing concerning the family subdivision. I'm going to ask Mr. Baumgartner, we'll come forward, just make a few opening comments, and then we'll entertain the motion to open the public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. The proposal that we are looking to amend the subdivision ordinance for is what we call a family subdivision provision. It is dealing with the division of a tract of land which would otherwise be classified as a subdivision herein, excuse me, hereunder wherein the grantee is a family member of the grantor. So, that would be one of the provisions that would need to be considered for a family subdivision. The resulting lots that would comply with the standards of the subdivision requirements would need to ensure that all the requirements are met with the exception of a right-of-way easement requirement. So, the resulting lots that would be served would be pertinent to the right-of-way or easement, and it would need to be at least 20 feet in width, and not to exceed serving four residential lots or parcels. And lastly, there would need to be a requirement that the private road disclosure would have to be provided to the individual that would end up getting, the family individual that would end up getting the actual lot itself disclosing that no one maintains the road. It would be considered a private road, and it would be up to them to maintain the road itself forever until such time that the road could be improved with pavement, that at that time with pavement and right-of-way, they could come back and petition to have the state add the road. For the purposes of the ordinance, we're looking at the term "family member" shall mean a spouse, parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, or grandchild. The term includes the step, half, and in-law relationships. That's pretty much what we're looking at to, under consideration for the family subdivision provision.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we now stand in public hearing. Commissioner Mark, do we have anyone that signed up?
Uh, no.
All right. I would give the opportunity for anyone that would be in attendance that you may not have had the opportunity to sign up. Do you want to make any comments concerning this public hearing on family subdivision?
I'm making a motion to go ahead and approve the hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, thank you. Next would be the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks, only on agenda topics. And, Mr. Commissioner Mark?
We don't have anybody for agenda except for at the end.
Okay, general topics, okay? All right, we will move to item three, the consent agenda. You have there on the consent agenda the minutes of June 20th, 2022, regular session. You have tax releases and refunds, recreation and parks, Cherry Point Spouse Club grant, and then a sheriff's office donation check. Are there any items that you desire to pull from the consent agenda this evening?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as is.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right, next would be agenda item number four, departmental matters. We have this evening with us Mr. Jeffrey Merritt, who will be bringing forth the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 funding. Good evening, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, we bring before you an amendment to add funds from the American Rescue Plan Act that was disseminated through the state. They received approximately over $15 million.
Thank you.
To help with the provision of administration of the SNAP program. DHS is allocating $2 million to the county to support our efforts as we continue to see work load increases in this program as related to the result of increased food security due to the pandemic. We do have plans on how to utilize these funds, which we've spoken with the state about, and they give us our approval. We would ask that amount of $92,029 be included in our budget, as that was the amount that was appropriated to Craving County.
All right, before we entertain the motion, are there any questions for Mr. Merritt?
This is a mandated item.
Food nutrition services is a mandated program, yes, sir. Workload increases to try to help cover some of those functions that are in this program. I would remove the timeliness of applications and also recertification.
Right. Now, my question is, are these county employees from other departments? Are these contractor employees?
These are contracted employees through a temporary agency, but a lot of these individuals do work at other county departments of social services, and that this is a pretty unique work that's done. So, really, you can't just, it's hard. It would not be a good use of funds to try to get someone, use some money to train them when there's people already to be trained due to the amount of time it takes someone to train.
You know people, you need people who already know what they're doing.
Right. We want them to come in, and on the first day, you know, we're all working under the same policy procedure, so they can come in and start doing the work immediately instead of paying them to be trained, and then they possibly not have any more money to continue to employ them to do the work, and then they haven't done any, we just pay them.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, any additional questions? All right, here none. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the additional funding of $92,029. Any discussion on the motion? Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Appreciate it. All right, item five is planning. Mr. Baumgartner, he has two items this evening. The first would be the consideration of the family subdivision provision.
Yes, sir. You know, we, when we had the public hearing, I went through and discussed the items. There's basically four items that would be added. One, a family member would have to be the grantor. You would also have to go through all the requirements of subdivision ordinance except right-of-way. The resulting lots would have to abut the right-of-way and be 20 feet, an easement of 20 feet, to be able to gain access to the property. And there would have to be a private road disclosure. In order to move on with this particular proposal, we would need to have a motion from the board to adopt the family subdivision review process.
So moved.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Madam Clerk, you got the motion and second? All right, discussion on the motion for the adoption of this subdivision change. The only comment I would make is that, you know, Commissioners, this is something we've been working on now for probably six to eight months. Commissioner Mark, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner McCabe, we all know that we've got folks in the rural parts of the county that it will assist families that air property, and so I would appreciate a positive vote on this. I think it will have a positive impact on many citizens in this county. Any further discussion? Here none. We'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the adoption, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, item B.
Item B is a subdivision for your consideration tonight called the Stately Pines Village. It's located in Township Six. Its property is owned by Kern Company out of Maryland. The surveying was done by Josh Nobles and engineering by Thomas Engineering. It consists of nine lots and approximately 5.43 acres, and each of the lots are going to be adjoining the state road Robertson Lane. The lots also will be served by the county water system and the New Bern sewer system that is currently located in that area. In order for the subdivision to be recorded, a motion is needed to approve the subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Stately Pines Village subdivision. Final discussion from the board. Don, I have, I know we have a citizen in the room tonight that has expressed a little bit of concern over this. Far as, you go with us if you will, just a little bit about it, far as, are they going to be using the Robertson Lane to, as far as ingress egress?
Yes, sir. That is a, that is a state road.
Was it, when it was built, was it built to standards? I mean, you say it's a state road, so I would expect it's built to standards, but do you feel like it was built to specifications to handle this additional folks that will be living there?
Yes, sir, I do think so. The, you know, the state does have their minimum subdivision requirements, and if you build the road to those requirements, and they inspect it, and they turn it over through the Board of Transportation to be added to the state system for maintenance, then certainly it should, it should have the ability to support the traffic that's on it. And the state would provide the necessary maintenance. If it has problems, the state would come out and make the repairs necessary to the asphalt or to the drainage that would need to be made.
Which Commissioner represents this? Commissioner Lainer? Might it be appropriate, Commissioner Lainer, I know there's somebody in the audience that I don't think had the opportunity to speak with you maybe prior to this. Would you desire to let us maybe just for you to have the opportunity to speak to them, maybe hear their concerns before we vote on this?
She can come up and speak. I mean, I don't, I've gone through it, and I've been out there. I mean, this is just the first of a number, roughly.
All right, you had, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. I'm just, you know, trying to...
She's going to speak if she signed up to, did she sign up to speak at the later one?
No. I don't think so.
No.
I mean, she hasn't talked to me about it, and I haven't heard anything from anybody out there about it. I've been out there, and I've seen it. I know what he's doing. I mean, I know that, you know, it's not going to go, but I don't see where this board has any authority over it, because the planning board passed it, and it met state requirements. So, it's going to be hard-pressed.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the board? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this subdivision of Stately Pines. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
No. All right, thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. All right, we will move to the item six would be Sheriff Chip Hughes, and I think we have with us also Captain John Rayner. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, got two things before y'all this evening. The first is a truck donation, a very generous donation by two citizens in Craving County that has helped us out in the past with a vehicle as well, another truck that was put in our K-9 division. And this couldn't come at a better time, because I've had vehicles on order now for almost a year, and we still don't know when we'll receive them. They will remain to be hard to get for quite some time, and nobody can really give us a timeframe on that. So, they've donated a 2024. We're going to ask that y'all accept that into our fleet and assume just the responsibilities of any vehicle that comes into our fleet for upfitting, maintenance, those sort of things.
All right, any questions from the board or sheriff?
So moved.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the truck donation. Any discussion on the motion? And if I'm correct, Sheriff, I think these individuals have also donated a truck prior. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, another truck, and...
Great contribution, and...
They will not let me mention their name, as much as I'd like to.
I thank you. Please relate to...
Very humble people.
Please relate to them on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. We appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second. Here no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, item B.
Yes, sir. This one is Internet Crimes Against Children or an ICAT grant that we worked closely with some of the General Assembly on, citing the specifics of the grant, and it's administered by the Sheriff's Association. It's in the amount of $48,577. It's fully funded, and I've asked Captain Rayner, who helped put this grant together, to speak about what the men and women of his division, which is the Criminal Investigative Division, how they were using this technology and equipment.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So, the ICAT grant that we've asked for is basically geared at investigators who go after child pornography, dissemination, creation of, as well as any predators who stalk children online through chakras. We average five to 10 tips a month on ICAT cases, with three to four arrests a month versus ICAT cases that come in. The items that we've asked for, one is the interview room system, which upgrades the system. We currently have a camera system, a better system that's more user-friendly, and it has better storage capabilities, and it also is just more functionality. The current system we have is somewhat antiquated and has some issues where we hide lost recordings and interviews. And then the biggest item in the list is a forensic computer that will allow us to download dump computers, laptops, cell phones. Currently, it takes us roughly three hours to drop a cell phone, take all data from a cell phone. That is an average cell phone. The computer we're asking for takes about 22 minutes to dump the same thing. Laptops take anywhere from four to 10 hours, depending on how much data store on them. We can do them in less than an hour. And then the rest of it is storage devices for cell phones and laptops. If they lose power once we seize them for search warrant purposes, they lock themselves out, which makes them unobtainable at that point for us. The two items in there for storage is to keep them powered in a safe mode so that we can't lose the data it maintains. It also prevents anybody from accessing them remotely to wipe them off. And then the additional is the training with the Cell Bright system, which is the phone and laptop dump system, which we got last year, you know, through last year we used that allows us to break phones and laptops and actually read the data that's stored on it primarily.
All right, any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the grant in the amount of $48,578. Discussion, Commissioner Smith.
I have, I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
First, my first question, certainly this is much needed. My first question is, are these funds enough money to fully fund the program?
Yes, ma'am. So, that will fund everything we're asking for.
Okay. And are you going to need additional funds to sustain this program?
No. So, the computer is self-deficient, there's no additional on that other than IP setting it, of course. The data storage devices are no longer, no additional cost. Cell Bright is an annual renewal, which, part of this grant, which we covered one year renewal on it, but that is something that we, when we got that last year...
That's already in the budget.
Correct. That is a...
Thank you.
Everything else is one-time purchase.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, here none. You have there before you the budget amendment of $48,578 for the grant. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Sheriff, before you leave, do you got anything you want to share with us this evening?
Just, we had a quiet Fourth of July. We had all available personnel out there, just given the, what's been going on in the nation and some of the threats. No credible threats in this area. Everybody was out. I think every community that we visited was having a good time. They were doing it safely. Had a lot of stuff going on downtown New Bern, and our people supported the city of New Bern on that, so...
Thank you. Appreciate your service. All right, next we have Mr. Stanley Kite from Emergency Services, who has two items this evening to bring before the board. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. First item I have for you is Emergency Services that received a grant from the Department of Public Safety, and we have a budget amendment item before you. The grant award was $101,530. At the time, this grant was applied for, and we actually received the grant. However, from the pricing and the budgetary process and to where we are today, there was an extra cost due to availability of supplies and items with it. The original pricing would increase the trailer to $103,121. You see that budget amendment, you're supposed to pack it, and it's the same trailer that we had requested, a 25-foot fire station, meeting ADA requirements to be able to help with personal hygiene, both in shelter operations as well as when we have large-scale emergencies where we may have an OBR team or a forward team, and we don't have that facility sometimes fairly available. We, here in Florida, we looked at trying to rent some, and they were not available. We got lucky and got one or two, pulled in from other regions, but then they were short-term loaners, and we felt like having the opportunity to get a grant and have one of our own in the county would be very beneficial.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kite? All right, here none. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the grant of $101,530, but we would take $1,591 out of fund ballots, giving a total of $103,121. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right, item B.
Item B is the, what kind of Department of Insurance, did you know, every year they have an opportunity for what we call the matching fire grant? And historically, the county has been gracious in helping these departments that were successful applicants to obtain the grant, to be able to match those grants. And this year, I have several departments represented. I would like to say that, I wasn't looking, the Doug Fire Chief was a little apprehensive whether or not he was going to be able to make it here in time to be with you on it. But as you see, these grants total $325,544 to help with the match, but I have, and I would like to give them an opportunity to come up before you in case you have any questions. First on the order would be Little Swift Creek Volunteer Fire Department, which is recipient for $29,882.
Good evening, sir.
Did you have any questions about what we're getting on?
If you will, just very briefly, if anybody can, just go over your list just very briefly, and just share with us some of the items that you approved.
So, we're getting two drop tanks, four sets of SCBA bottles, packs, five sets of turnout water, and two bottles.
Okay. All right, any questions far as Little Swift Creek? Jack, you want, let's handle this all as one, or you want to do them on an individual basis?
Stanley and I were debating that out in the hallway. It's really the board's choice, but it might be easier just to go ahead and approve them.
Okay, as we go through.
Here it is, the budget amendment at the end.
All right. All right, any questions for Little Swift Creek? All right, here none. Do we have a motion that...
No move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the matching grant of $29,882. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
You happen to be kin to that Mr. Griffin over there? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I did not understand. Change of administration.
I'm sorry. I saw Griffin there, so I didn't know if there was two, two of them. All right?
Different.
Different.
It's a change, just spell it.
All right.
Next, I have Vanceboro Fire Department, which is recipient of $14,788. Two of us is here to have that discussion.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioner. Our list of items, Stacy Lewis, Chief of Vanceboro Fire Department. Our list of items we've got approved for grant, 30 buckets of foam. All that'll replace, half of the foam we have now has the cancer causing agent that they've come up with now, so there'll be 30 buckets of foam purchased, supposedly cancer-free. So, that'll replace all of our older stuff. Five SCBA cylinders, 10 traffic vests, our turnout gear, coats, pants, impound gloves, and our 10 pagers for communication.
All right.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant of $14,788 for Vanceboro Fire Department. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Stacy.
The Chair for the Long Time Coming, that I have tonight, Co City Volunteer Fire Department, received a grant of $28,140. I have Chief Allen here and his president.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, like I said, long time coming. We're extremely proud to say that we received the grant. Basically, what we're looking at behind is six complete air pack bottles, masks, the whole nine yards, and additional six SCBA bottles.
What's the whole nine yards?
It's been... Bottle, mask.
The whole nine yards, if anything.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Co City Volunteer Fire Department for $28,140. Any discussion on the motion? I do have to make a comment about this one, because I think this is, this is monumental tonight. I first come on the Board of Commissioners elected in 2006. We started having discussions in 2007, Stanley and I did, with Co City. So, you could get to this point tonight. And here we are in 2022. And I appreciate both of you gentlemen for your leadership in making this happen. Both of you have worked hard, I know you have.
Yes, sir.
You and I have talked on the phone a lot. And, and I think this Board of Commissioners, you, you did what we asked you to do. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, any further discussion? Here none. None. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if you will allow, since the Dover chief has not made it here yet, I did not want to hold your meeting up. Dover was awarded $29,992. Their item list contains low-level trainers for drafting orders, five self-contained breathing apparatus face masks, which is the air pack and stuff that they have to use when they execute a hazard sap affair, four spare bottles for those packs, but also the new valves, 10 fire hoses, which is technical hose, and then they got the complete SCBA units themselves, with mask, bottle, and frame, six turnout gear boots, which are at the NFPA compliant, then two coats, six sets of gloves, again, another six set of gloves, and two, order of five helmets, and then six helmets, which are just different types, and then six turnout gear hoods, and two turnout gear pants, not the technical rest, which they have been granted.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Dover Volunteer Fire Department for $29,992. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, thank you.
I have Chief Milligan here to represent the Fort Monmouth Volunteer Fire Department, which received $30,000.
Good evening.
Good evening, Greg Milligan, Fire Chief, Fort Monmouth Volunteer Fire Department. Chairman Jones, Commissioners, County Manager's office. First, I'd like to thank y'all for the support that y'all have given to the Percival Fire EMTs, all enforcement, and the dispatchers. Before you see a list of equipment that we have, that totaled $63,435. We received the $30,000 from the state. Have an intake valve for our new engine, 3401. Have some scene lights, flashlights, five portable radios, six sets of turnout gear boots, four full sets of turnout gear, 12 gloves and 10 boots. Y'all have any questions?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here no discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and this is for Fort Monmouth Volunteer Fire Department for $30,000.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Before I leave, as President of the Fireman's Association, I would like to thank y'all in the work that the county has done in transferring the land back to the county at the industrial park and future hopes of developing a public safety training facility. I don't know if y'all just recently saw, Quaterock County Community College just received a very well-grant from the state in hopes that someday we'll have something like that in our industrial park. And again, I thank y'all on behalf of all the fire chiefs in Craven County. Thank you.
Thank you, Gray.
Mr. Chairman, next I have number nine, Fire and Rescue, which will be represented tonight by Mr. Roger Wetherson. I apologize, their recipient was for $29,970.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Excuse me for putting on my sunglasses, but when I got out of the truck, I didn't put my eyeglasses on and if I don't, I can't see a thing. Just to let you know. And again, thank y'all so much for what y'all do for us. So, we're getting radios. We're going to get some 800 communications, that's pagers, thermal imaging cameras, some electrical equipment that would help us on our baggage storage stuff, vents, personal protective, gear bags, turnout gear, excuse me, personal protective with gloves, helmets, personal protective with fire hoods, personal protection stuff with rescue incidents, and a rip bag in case that we need to go in and rescue some raw people, I think.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This is number nine, Fire and Rescue for $29,970.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my list of departments that received a grant. And I would like to say, like I said, my appreciation for your support, because it's helped them tremendously. As you can imagine how much the gear costs, it helps them be able to be adequate, prepared, and protected, and perfect with their equipment. And at the overall end of the day, the goal is to be sure to insure to home insurance, to protect their home insurance. And I'd like to say all these departments so far have done a great job in doing that, especially as it is with volunteers. I'd just like to recommend that you understand that it's tough, everybody, and that they are really doing a great job. And thank you for your support.
Yes, we do want to thank all of you, and please relate to your individual departments, the appreciation of the Board of Commissioners for your sacrifice that you make of time and also your own treasure. We appreciate that, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item seven B is the budget amendment, which allocates the money for the grant you just approved.
All right, the budget amendment total there would be $325,544. Do we have a motion?
We'll move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, agenda item eight is appointments. You have there, under appointments, you have pending, current, and upcoming. Under pending, you have the Craven Agent Planning Board. Commissioner Liner, you still, we still working on that one?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have the Craven County Board of Adjustments and the Volunteer Agriculture District. All right, under current, we have tonight two appointments for the Board of Equalization and Review. The first one would be Mr. Joe Fogelman, who represents Commissioner Mark's district.
I would re, we're going for the 12 years now. I would reappoint him for the two years.
Okay, we have a nomination for Joe Fogelman for, and, and these would be taken on individual for Commissioners' districts. So, for District One, do we have any further nominations for that? Here none, which Joe Fogelman will be accepted by acclamation. Then we have for District Three, Commissioner Smith's district, Mr. Jimmy Dillahunt. Commissioner Smith, you want to reappoint him?
Yes.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Dillahunt. Are there any additional nominations from the floor? Here none, Mr. Dillahunt will be also be accepted by acclamation. All right, next, standing in Zonin. Commissioners, I'm going to ask you, if you would, let's defer this to the next meeting. We do have a list there. We have been working on...
Yeah, we have one coming up.
An individual for that, and we should have it at the next meeting. Is that a consensus?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next would be the Fire Tax Commissioners Board for Harlow Township Five. Commissioner McCabe?
I've been chair, could defer it to the next meeting?
Okay, we'll defer.
When you receive his application.
Okay. Here no objection. We will move next to the Craven County Clean Suite. You have an applicant, Ms. Sharon Logan, who seeks appointment, wants to desire the Board.
Why don't we, I, did you call, happen to call on that man?
Did I call the?
I mean, do you know anything about that?
I know that she's recommended by...
All right, I would make a recommendation.
Okay, we have a nom, okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Logan. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next, we have the Riverbean Board of Adjustment, Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, sir, and my understanding is Rick Fisher does wish to be reappointed, so I would like to nominate him.
Okay, we have the nomination of Rick Fisher. Are there any additional nominations? Here none. We will accept Mr. Fisher by acclamation. Next, we have the Craven County ABC Board. We will also, we'd like to take this by Commissioners' district. We have the first from District One, Mr. Chip Chagnon. Commissioner Mark?
I would recommend that he be reappointed as Chairman for one year.
Okay, let's, if we can, let's take just his reappointment to the Board first.
Okay, yeah, reappointment.
Okay, so, we have a nomination for Mr. Chagnon for District One. Are there any additional nominations? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation. Then we have Commissioner Booker, who represents his district. I would ask that we renominate Mr. Commissioner Booker.
Yes, I would.
Okay, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none. And then we have Ms. Kathleen Cook, who represents District Six. Commissioner Liner?
Renominate.
Okay, we have a nomination, Ms. Cook. Are there any additional nominations from the floor? All right, Ms. Cook will be accepted by acclamation. All right, now, Commissioner Mark, we have the Craven County ABC Board appointment for the chairperson for a one-year term.
I would recommend Chip Chagnon.
Okay, we have a nomination. We have a nomination of Mr. Chip Chagnon. Any additional nominations from the Board? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation. All right, next you have the National Association of Counties. We need to appoint a vote and delegate. I think the only Commissioner that will be attending this year is Commissioner Liner. And so, I, I would ask that the Board, if you would, to let's nominate Commissioner Liner to serve.
Definitely.
So moved. Okay, here no additional nominations. He will be our appointee to serve. Next would be the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We need to appoint a vote and delegate Commissioners. I know there's several of us that are attending. I've talked to individual Commissioners and we've got to get some scheduling worked out. I would like to ask if the Board would allow for me to have the authority to designate out of that list of Commissioners that attend, who would be our voting delegate?
So moved.
Second. Okay, thank you. Any other suggestions? Here no. All right, we'll take that. All right, you see the upcoming terms that will be expiring in July? Please take note of them and for the Commissioners' districts in which they represent. Are there any additional appointments to be made tonight? All right, here none. We will next move to the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have three items for your consideration this evening. All three involve county-owned real estate. The first item is for 2502 New Bern Avenue. It involves removal of a parcel after the expiration of the upset bid process. This is a parcel that we acquired through the tax foreclosure program. The bid is in the amount of $5,000. The upset period has now expired. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $3,717.58. The tax value on the property is $5,000. We own this property jointly with the city of New Bern, and New Bern has already given final approval to the matter, so I would suggest that the Board likewise give...
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the conveyance of partial number eight dash zero three seven dash one zero two. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passed. Item B.
The second item is an initial purchase offer for 2510 Georgia Avenue. It is in the city of New Bern, and we do own it jointly with the city of New Bern, which has already given its preliminary approval to the proposal, which is an offer amount of $8,000. You have a tax value of $13,500, and the original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $8,889.78. If the Board approves this, it will be put out for upset bids and brought back to the Board for final approval, and I do recommend the Board consider final approval.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have the motion and a second to approve the bidding process and authorize for the upset bid for partial number eight dash zero one eight dash one two three. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. And item C.
Yes, sir. The final item is another initial offer to purchase. It is at 801 Chatoka Lane. I'm sure I mispronounced that, but it is spelled correctly in your agenda packet. It is in the city of New Bern. We do own it jointly with the city of New Bern, which has already given its initial approval to the sale. The offer amount is in the amount of $12,000 with past due taxes and cost of foreclosure of $9,776.06, and we have a tax value of $15,000. couple of weeks. I do recommend that the board consider final...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the transaction and authorizing the upset bid process with partial number eight dash zero two two dash zero eight one. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, next, Commissioners, we have the petition of citizens for general topics. Again, each speaker will have a lot of time, a three minutes to make remarks. Commissioner Mark?
Yes, we have, do you want to have Ray?
Yep.
Break?
Mr. Ray Griffin.
He's still there, right? Griffin, come up.
Good evening, sir, if you will state your name and address for the record, please, if you don't mind.
First of all, I'm proud of you, and amen, a lot of people are. All I can say is just, just have to go somewhere else, they don't like it. God bless you, Ray Griffin, North Carolina, from Bethel, North Carolina. But the Supreme Court overturned Roe versus Wade, and eliminated the federal right to abortion. This had been fifty years in the making. We need to do everything we can to protect the rights of unborn. Abortion is still legal in North Carolina until twenty weeks. The only way we can change this is for, to go to the North Carolina legislation, pass a new bill for the governor to sign it. Let's look at the bullshit. The Vietnam Memorial Wall has sixty-eight thousand names on it, it stretches five hundred and sixty feet. We would have built a similar memorial for the little babies who have died since Roe versus Wade, it would have forty-five million names on it, and it would stretch over sixty-three miles. Let's make Craven County a sanctuary for the unborn. We need to consider to declare Craven County a sanctuary for the unborn. A sanctuary in county for the unborn is an ordinance that tries to outlaw abortions in the county. In the coming election, we've talked about this, that we need to support a proposal for a constitutional amendment to make abortion illegal in North Carolina. We need to make abortion an ongoing issue with the November election to motivate voters across the political spectrum to go to the polls. Lieutenant Governor Martin Robinson has likened abortion to murder and urged lawmakers to restart the medical, to restrict the medical procedure. He also stated lawmakers should push to ensure abortion is no longer legal for any reason. Time is running out. You Commissioners need to call our state lawmakers to immediately take up this issue and say that we support North Carolina to block all abortions. I know it's a federal law, but I know y'all can put something in to have a good outcome and say that we support that North Carolina become a state that does not believe in abortions. If we ever needed a election this year to change things around, to put some good people in office, and to make things change, we need to do it today. And the reason why I say this is we need to go ahead and get you to work on this, it's because we're only, what, four or five months away from voting. We need some good people in Raleigh to support this abortion issue. And anyhow, God bless, once again, I say I'm proud to be an American. I hate what is going on in the world today, we seeing so much, just violence, shootings on Fourth of July. But hopefully, we can get some more political people that are in good standings, and we'll stand up for what is right and do what is right. Amen, God bless all of you. Appreciate you pretty damn bad for coming here. Come on.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else signed up?
That's it.
Commissioner Mark? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next item would be the County Manager's Report, Mr. Vike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. Just a couple of updates, today's one of my favorite days of the year, which is the new fiscal year started today, first work day of that, so we're starting the new budget that was just adopted. Mr. Warren, his team in finance have worked very hard to get everything ready to go, and as far as I know, it opened up today. I also wanted to report the Dick Center, Commissioner Lainer may want to talk a little bit about it. At your next meeting, we will bring forward the commitment that we make every year, or every other year, excuse me, to the Dick Center, which is a three-county partnership for the facility in Jacksonville. We have requested this be a one-year commitment this year, I believe Commissioner Lainer mentioned that, it will be on your next agenda. So if you have any questions or comments, please reach out to Commissioner Lainer and myself, we'd have to fill you in. Commissioner Lainer, I did look at the last data from last month, and it did see that the usage was maintained at a pretty strong level, from what we've seen previously, so there is still usage from Craven County there. We do, and I was made aware today, and it came up awful quick, there are elections starting on Thursday for the City of New Bern in the runoff, so there will be one-stop voting here, just to make you aware of that as you, as you come, there may be parking issues from time to time, but we do have a lot of faith in our election staff, they do a great job, and they are, they are ready to go for Thursday. Last week, enjoyed a nice ride around with Commissioner Smith through her district, we went and looked at some areas that she wanted to focus on coming up with the next year, so we had a good time with that, looked at a lot of different areas in, in her district. And I did want to, and I don't see Mr. Hodges, I don't know if he stepped in or not. Gene, you stepped in for just a second. I do want to take the opportunity, my last remark, well, second to last remark, is that tomorrow is Gene's fiftieth birthday, so I told him I would embarrass him publicly, one thing he asked me not to do, so tomorrow he will have a big birthday, so happy birthday to you, Gene. And Commissioners, just a reminder, your next meeting on July eighteenth will be rather lengthy, there were some things that we had held over, some of our budget workshops that will be taken up at that meeting, Mr. Chairman, so that's all my comments, let's have questions.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Commissioners' Report. We can this evening, let's start, Commissioner McCabe, you have anything?
Oh, no, it's present time.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
I, I do appreciate our County Manager and his staff riding around with me last week, taking a look at my area. My area is mostly in the city, and many things we cannot do that we would like to do for the people in my area, however, I, we have the commitment of making every effort to, to look at our properties and our areas and see if there's something that can be done, even if we contact some volunteers to do some things. I very much appreciate that, and not just the Manager, but all, all the other folk that went with me and took a look at my areas. There are a lot of needs there, and we know there are some things that we cannot do, but we appreciate trying to do what we can.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Lainer?
Sure, I only have one thing, last Thursday, I changed, I attended the change of command at Cherry Point, the new CG for second mall is Major General Benedict, sharp individual, great potentials, be good, good move.
It's good, all right, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, first of all, happy Fourth of July, happy America's Independence Day. Since much of my district includes the City of New Bern, I would ask that all citizens please exercise your rights as Americans and go to polls and vote as you so choose. And third, and this is the big one, the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission has launched a statewide public relations campaign to educate our citizens on the value of the second-largest economic sector in the state. We will have a kickoff press conference on the twelfth of July in Raleigh. Initial focus will be in the Triangle area for most of our advertising, but we've been saying we were going to ramp up and do this, and we launch on the twelfth of July.
That's good. Thank you for your service. All right, Commissioner Mark?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Number one, Ray Leggett is no longer president of the hospital, we have a new president, but I think we should congratulate Ray for all he did for the citizens of this county, and that we have a Kansas center, which is going very well, and in the area of the heart, I don't think there's a better hospital in, around, even with Raleigh, that has the success that we've had with heart patients. And the new president is Michael Smith, which we will get to know in our next meeting, which will be next Tuesday, I guess. Also, I did attend a Highway Seventy meeting, which the, part of it was on Highway Seventy, as you can see, Highway Seventy has been started, and it's probably going to take, they say, two and a half years, I would say more like three years. But in addition to that, they talked about resiliency, and that's a study on how we can stop the flooding in the counties, highways, and roads, and housing. I wasn't impressed by that, because that study goes on for two or five years, and we could have a hurricane tomorrow. But one of the things that I did mention is that instead of all these resiliency studies, that we do something about the Neuse River, and that's draining the Neuse River from Raleigh all the way down to the end of Onslow County, or I guess Carteret County, and which we know, because of all the contributaries in that river, if it's cleaned out, we would stop seventy-five percent of the flooding that we get. My question was answered with, we're going to do a study. So, that's where the Lieutenant Governor, he likes, or the Governor, likes to do studies. So I said to him, that doesn't help us this year when we have a hurricane. But that's pretty much what the meeting was about, that and Highway Seventy, and it's about time Highway Seventy got started, we're about two years behind on that. So fortunately, it's going to cause some traffic problems, but in the end, I think we're all going to enjoy it, because as we know, James City was the fourth worst intersection in North Carolina. And once that's taken care of, and we have a three-way highway going down, all the way down, I don't know how far down it's going to go, but Havelock is, is forty-seven percent complete, and I, I can only see good things happening with that road, and eventually, at some point, we'll hit that, we'll be able to get down to the shipping in Moorhead City and get to a bigger area to bring in bigger boats. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I have nothing this evening, anything else from the Board of Commissioner staff to bring before us? Seven o'clock, we usually are starting right now, so we didn't do too bad tonight. This is a change for us, six o'clock, so we try to get out the, the message to the citizens across this county, to give them the opportunity to get here earlier also, and so I think one thing has been achieved tonight, staff is going to be able to get home a little bit early to be with your family, so that's good.[1771.91]